Talking about the PCF for the assis- the assessor's office. It was not approved by the PQB. The wording on it leads, would, could lead someone to believe that they're kind of getting a person ready for the job. What needs to happen is that it needs to be posted appropriately and follow the bylaw. So it needs a PRF, it needs to be posted. That needs to be submitted to the PQB. And in the meantime, I would suggest that the Board of Assessors submit a new PCF for Shannon Cutler, which would say, you know, she's working more hours to take over some of the job duties that have been abandoned or left by Lori. On this, it gives a $5 per hour raise. I would say that that's not necessary, that if you need to work more hours than what you were given at your rate, that would be fine, but not at a $5 hour increase, so.
Could the PQB decide that on if there's any salary increase involved with taking over more hours?
Well, I, I, I guess you've already checked with the ethics, you know. Heather had mentioned that there was, you know, being on the board, you couldn't get the raise. Again, we have no skin in the game, just sign, give us the form and fill it out correctly and we'll be more than happy to deal with that.
I guess I just wonder what's the basis for $5? Where does that $5 increase come from?
Yeah, I don't know.
What's the reason for that? I mean, I get the more job duties, but what is, how did you get, how did they get to that number?
You have to ask Mr. Swanson.
Yeah. You know, again, we only recommend to the board, but the idea of being a temporary principal assessor i- is an issue. I don't believe that we have such a position as a temporary principal assessor, and I believe that the job description for a principal assessor requires certain certifications, skill sets, and so forth. So, I frankly don't know where the PPB's jurisdiction would end and yours would begin. But I would have some concern about the incumbent meeting the requirements of the job also, in order to get the title. The temporary, like Liz mentioned, temporary expansion of hours to take on additional duties, I think that's a good way to go.
Okay. So I'll make a motion, we don't approve this appointment and it's sent back with the recommendation that the position is posted appropriately and go through the normal process. And if they want to extend additional hours to Shannon, that's fine.
So they would need to rewrite the title as there isn't a change in title, just an addition of hours?
Additional hours, right, and a job posting for the principal assessor.
So will the PQB relay that information to the assessors, or would you like Heather to send that memo? Heather can send that memo. So there's a motion on the, there's a motion on the floor not to sign the PCF for Shannon Cutler. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of not signing, say aye. Aye. Abstentions?
I abstain.
Nays? Okay. Next, you have a P, two different agendas.
Swanson.
You have a PCF for Geraldine Swanson, for Health Director for up to 90 days. Is this being reposted? Is that what's going on here?
This is a temporary position for a new, a new job. This is Health Director, not Health Agent, and we signed it off so that the Board of Health can go out and post the job and, and fill it.
So you signed off on the PCF?
That's for the temporary 12 weeks.
Okay. And the PRF is separate?
That's-
Separate than this?
Separate, yeah.
Okay, so there's a PCF for Geraldine Swanson, for Health Director for up to 90 days, that's been signed off by the department head, verified by the accountant, and signed off by the PQB chair.
I don't think it's verified by the accountant.
Oh, by the assistant. Sorry.
I don't think that she has the power to verify it. Because when we met before, I didn't know she, when we met, Janet Kane, Glendale Road, Finance and PPPB. I wasn't aware that Joyce had signed it.
My understanding, my understanding from a conversation with Vicky Pryor was that, and I thought she had signed a version, no she hadn't? I, I thought she was, I thought she had approved on her end because she believed that the funds could be taken from the W PAT.
That was a previous PCF that's been pulled away, pulled out by the Board of Health, and removed, and this is being replaced. So first of all, there is, the one concern, Art had brought it to the Finance Committee to see if we would verify it in lieu of Vicky's absence. We reviewed it, looked at the dollar amount, and feel that it, it's a revenue stream and a pay rate that cannot be sustained for 12 months, because if they were to continue with that pay rate for a new hire, they would be over budget by almost, or $4,000.
$3,654 in defense.
Yes, thank you. So that, first of all, there, it's hard to have a temporary position assigned for a job that has not have an approved PRF to begin with, so we were not quite clear on that, which is, we did not approve the PRF last night on the Finance Committee simply because there wasn't enough funds in the budget, in the Wage Line budget that was approved at town meeting, for, to the same $24 an hour for two health agents at 10 hours and 21 hours. That would put them, again, over budget by just under $4,000.
There's no funding.
So my first, so can I, can I just ask one question? If this, if we can't sign off on the PRF to post the job as a Health Director-
Because of funding.
Because of funding, how do you sign off on a temporary PCF without funding?
The temporary is for only 12 weeks, so I imagine there's funding for-
We have enough funding for 12 weeks.
There must be funding for 12 weeks. As far as the PRF, just what Janet says, it's, it's right there, they-
But how do you sign off on if it says Health, like if it said Health Agent, that'd be one thing, but it says Health Director, and there isn't even a job description or posting for Director?
There is a, there is a job description in the PRF and-
But it hasn't been posted.
And after you approve it, it can be posted.
Or not.
If you approve it, right.
But it wasn't approved by Finance.
So we can't approve it because there's not enough funding in there for a full time? So we're gonna catch 22. We got something here for 12 weeks that's gonna automatically be renewed in another 12 weeks, because we won't have it all done.
It can't be renewed.
It can't be?
Temporary positions cannot be renewed.
Okay.
So it's just for 12, 12 weeks, that's give you enough time to go post it and do all the right things according to the bylaw.
Except it's still not gonna give you the funding.
It will just deplete the funding source for the new person, whomever that is, who ends up being the Health Director at the end of the 90 days, then that funding will be diminished even more for the remaining nine months that, that the job is gonna exist.
Can I just make a point here? We didn't give the Police Department any more money, because we don't have any money more, any more money to pay them. We didn't give the Fire Department any more money, because we don't have any more money to fund their department. We don't fund the Highway Department at 52 weeks, because we don't have enough money to fund. Every department thinks that they are the most important department in town, but guess what? We don't have enough money to fund everybody at the level that they think they should be funded. We just don't have it. And so, this is a go around, every single week, I feel, about how do we get around the rules? Every department is acting on their own and trying to figure out a way to get exactly what they want, and we can't do it. There's just not any money to do it. You have to work within the constraints that you give. In this case, the constraint is money, and I don't have it to give you. I, I don't know how else to make it any more clear. Do I want another police officer? Yes. Do I want the Health Agent to be there all the time? Yes. Are they both very important? Yes. But the Town of Southampton does not have the money to fund all of the departments where they think they need to be funded.
So I just wanna say something, 'cause I was at one of the Health Board's meetings on that. And if you look, I think it might have been, since Vicky didn't sign off on it, but on their original PCF, PRF, whatever it was, the accountant had listed the two accounts where the money's come out of, and the $4,000 comes out of a different account.
But it's not the Wage Line, it's, it's a W PAT grant.
W PAT grant, and the money cannot be used to fund that. It's from interest-
It's for only when she does the work pertaining to that, was the way they were discussing it.
Okay, and then we had that meeting with the PQB, and we talked about, write it down, document where it comes from, and then we get something completely new.
And if you look at the new PRF, it doesn't have the W PAT on it.
No.
And, and that, there is, I mean, I think Charlie spoke to it, he met with the, was it the PQB, or was it the Finance Committee, and the Board of Health, and explained that the W PAT, that does not-
I even wrote the WP loan program years ago. But the reality is, is that money wasn't allocated to just simply give to the way that they're trying to slice it up. It, the whole system doesn't function, there isn't enough money to, to support the position.
There's just not.
It just doesn't. I, I moved that we do not sign this.
And we did make, that, we've met more with the Board of Health than probably any other board in the last six months.
They're the only ones that show up when they submit a PCF.
And they come and they bring other people in, and we came up with some recommendations to pay one Health Agent that does the field work at a lower rate, so that they could sustain another Health Agent at a, at a different, at the, at the, or not, yeah, the lower rate, so they could sustain the number of hours they need for the other Health Agent. And I don't know what happened to that recommendation, we thought we had agreement on it at the time, this was probably six months ago. There was a warrant, as you know, at the annual town meeting, that was taken off for more money, that never went to vote, so, you know, the, the budget is the budget, and they really can't take from the, the W PAT to do what they want to do, unfortunately. But we do need, you know, two Health Agents, we do have one, we do have a signed PRF for Ron Lauren, he is working at least 10, 10 hours a week at $24 an hour. So that plus this PCF puts us, you know, at an unsustainable rate, so.
We were just kinda discussing, if we don't approve the temporary position, and we allow them to post it, they're still a-
They're still short $3,700.
Well, but they can post it for the amount that they have in the budget.
They could change the, either the number of hours or the pay scale.
Right.
They could change one or the other.
By not having the temporary position, that would save them the money, so when they get the permanent position, we already have somebody, part-time Health Agent, and they're not-
You have two people in that department right now.
Yeah, so-
But neither one is qualified to do both jobs.
But only one is, has approved.
Right.
One has been approved, yes.
So if they quickly get a post, they get hired, they'd have somebody in place quickly.
They need to change the funding, or the number of hours, in order to stay within the budget that they have.
Can I make a recommendation?
Mm-hmm.
Other than the fact that I'm falling asleep over here. But I think it's very important that the Board of Health is able to continue forward, and I think they're getting really frustrated. Perhaps it's, it would be something the Board would consider, which is making a motion to approve an amended piece, and saying to them, you know, "We're not gonna approve it as submitted, but we will approve it as this. We will approve it as a Health Agent. We will approve either, whatever the calculation is, $24 an hour times 18 hours a week, or $24, or $22 an hour times 21 hours a week, whatever it is. But modify on the piece of paper and say, for the time being, we'll approve this, being temporary, but being the fact this is a numerous time that's come across without having hired someone full-time, we'll only approve it for a limited period of time, and since this would need to go back before the approval of the PPP and the Finance Committee, we can put a stipulation on it that says, this is approval pending, this is approved pending their approval of these modifications and the acceptance of the Board of Health for the change." It's just a recommendation from this side of the room.
I'm sorry. Heather, just for clarification, do it as the Health Director.
No. Call as a Health Agent, 'cause the Health Director hasn't-
We attempted to do that at the last meeting with the Board of Health and the PPPB, and we were, it was explained to us that they would not work as an agent, but as a Director.
So what I would, what I would say is-
Just for information.
Because that hasn't been approved yet, but because we wanna make sure we are acting in good faith, and we are not holding up the process of the Board of Health for moving forward, and we understand and we recognize the extensive frustration on everyone's part, that this thing has gone over and over, I don't even know how many months at this point, I've lost track of it. But to offer, it, it's kinda like contract negotiation, you keep offering, you're saying term A, we're already telling you we're not doing term A, but here's term B, and here's the things, and that way at least it's going back to them, and they have something to work with. Maybe they say, you know what, I appreciate your efforts, thank you, let's move forward with this, and we'll come back to the table with something later. Maybe they say, no, but at least the Board and the town is trying to make an effort to move forward, other, and I understand, I've been in most of the discussions that pertain, you know, let's call it Health Agent, you know, this is really the amount you have to expend. I, I've had the conversation so many times, I can probably repeat them in my sleep like everybody else can. But I'm just saying, if the Board may wish to consider saying, okay, well, this is something we can offer you. We can offer you what you're asking for, and we understand, we would only send this back to start the process again, but we understand it's a very lengthy process, and we only meet every two weeks, and the other boards have trouble meeting as well, perhaps we can just temporarily provisionally approve something to move forward.
After that lengthy discussion by Heather, you know, here we go, we're changing the rules again, and we're coming up, I mean, you know, there, there are furloughs that could be done at the, the end of the, end of the year, I mean, there's all sorts of things that can be done here, I think. Like I say, we don't have any skin in the game, just, just, just tell us, you know, just follow the rules. But, 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 but changing up and changing all sorts of things and modifying this and that, it should be pretty damn simple, right? You got X amount of dollars, you've got, you wanna cover the department, figure it out. It's not that hard, jeez.
Yeah. I, I think we should say, we've made every effort to cooperate with the Board of Health.
That's an understatement.
And what we suggested that they do is to continue Mrs. Swanson's position of Health Agent, have them post the position for Health Director, and, and Mrs. Swanson declined to do that, and that's, I think, why the Board of Health has been reluctant to, to make the change. But I also wanna make a point that with regard to the creation of the Director's job, the, Personnel Board approved that with caveats. And the caveats are that it is not a salaried position, it is not a professional managerial or supervisory position, it is a regular hourly position, and I don't know if that adds to it or not, but it, I think the caveats are important, again, because of FLSA considerations.
So you're saying that you gave that suggestion to the Board of Health at the PQB meeting, and the person in question said, "I won't work under that title." So the Board caved to that?
Well, we didn't necessarily cave, we said that-
No, the Board of Health said, "Oh, well."
Oh, yeah.
We'll sculpture it.
This conversation has been going on since March. I sat in the Finance Team meeting where we went through how to pay for it. I understand it's important, but you can't change the rules for people, it, the rules are set, and the PQB is by no means trying to make it difficult for people, but people are trying to make their own rules, and that's not okay.
Liz?
Yes?
I move that we don't sign this.
Okay, so there's a motion on, there's a motion on the floor not to sign.
Now, I, I-
Hold on.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna second it for conversation.
Please, 'cause we need to be very careful here, 'cause we've already run into this situation once. Temporary positions are good for 12 weeks. The last one was July 1st. Nobody was supposed to be work, the Board was told by us, it was written up and sent to them, and still the individual came in and was paid, because they have to pay in this stupid state. If you come and you work, you gotta get paid.
So even though we said, as of the end date of this PCF, the temporary position is over, nobody should be working, the Board of Health allowed that person to work, and we still had to pay, which is also a violation of the rules.
This is the chaos that, that permeates this place day after day after day. $942 worth, I, I should add, was paid, and, and it should not have been paid, but the person shows up, we said, "Yeah, you can come here, you can volunteer like I do, and get no pay," but this person showed up, because she showed up and worked, she got paid.
But somebody should say, "You have to go home."
Well, tell that to your Boards. And where's George here? Tell him that we need more elected positions.
So there's a motion on the floor not to sign the PCF and the PIARA, or one or the other, or both?
Well, the, which one's the PCF? PCF for the temporary.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor not to sign the PCF for the temporary Health Director for up to 90 days. There's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion about not signing it? All those in favor of not signing it, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
So three to two vote to not sign the PCF for the acting Health Director. There's a PRF for the Health Director, which, given the hours on it and the pay rate, will put the Board of Health in a deficit of $3,654.80. It was not approved by the Finance Committee due to insufficient funds. It was also not approved by the PQB for the reasons that Mr. Palermo stated.
No, it wasn't approved.
It was?
No, it wasn't approved.
With those caveat, sorry.
Is there any more money in their budget, on different lines that they could take from, if they had to?
They have one salary line this year that was combined after talking to them, because they weren't sure which direction they wished to proceed, whether they wanted more money in a Health Agent position, or more money in a clerical position, so we compromised, and we did the opposite of what we've done with other departments, which is put all the wages into one line to make it easier for them, should they decide this first year, they wanted two Health Agents, six Health Agents, one Health Agent, two clerical, vice versa. But all the funds is in one line for salary, everything else is expenses.
Too late for multiple choice, cut that out.
So there's, we need a motion to sign or not sign the PRF to post the Health Director.
So the, I was saying, yeah, I got a quick question if you don't mind. The only issue is, will they have enough funding? So, let me throw the thought in here, and if they don't hire for another month, month and a half, by the time they get it out there, will the funding catch up with the period left in the year?
I don't know, but I feel like if they had just done this right from the first time, we wouldn't be in this position to begin with.
I, I agree, I'm just concerned whether we get somebody in the position, and as long as the PQB signed off on it, and we make it known that they have to fund it with the current budget, so the hiring process should take that in mind, so they hire far enough into the fiscal year that they have enough funds.
John, I think the only concern is that where we've been level funding year to year right now, if we get to next fiscal and we level fund, what are we gonna do then? 'Cause they're gonna still be $1,000 plus, or $3,000 shy. So are they now having to furlough someone? I mean, then are we getting an unemployment claim? Those, those are just questions. I mean, one thing that was taken into consideration and discussed heavily is the notion of having to have someone 21 hours a week as opposed to 18. 18 is a non-benefited position, which puts us in a much better situation, that we don't have the potential for the additional costs.
It's just tougher to hire somebody without benefits, of course. That's why we lose them.
Go to traffic.
I move not to sign that.
There's a motion on the floor not to sign the PRF for the Health Director. Is there a second? Can I second thing? Second. Is there any other discussion?
I just want, we did raise the Wage Line, like $2,500 over last year, so we didn't even level fund it, because we are subject to the fact that we want them to be able to hire somebody that's more qualified than you could get in the past.
I thought the position was already posted.
Well, if it isn't-
Then go through the PRF process.
Oh, it didn't.
And, and, and may I make just one, that's another issue that we have here constantly. Anybody can just go and give it to Janine and put it on the Board, I told Janine that she can't do that anymore, she has to make sure there's a PRF in place and it's been approved by everybody.
And she understands that?
She understands it now.
Great, thanks.
And it was an ad, I think it's put in the dissent, pay for Golden Bynum, pay for bottom of the Board of Health. I don't think they understood totally that they had to do that.
So there's a motion and a second on the floor not to approve the PRF for the Board of Health. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of not signing the PRF for the Board of Health, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay.
Nay.
I'm gonna abstain, 'cause, you're gonna fold, so it's okay. I'm not sure which way I wanna go with that.
I mean, if the Board could go back to them with a recommendation, I think it would be helpful, 'cause I, I agree with Heather, in that they have been, I mean, with the changeover in the Chair, I think they, we, we as a town need someone in there more than 10 hours a week, but we need to make a recommendation to them, if that, it's possible.
It just seems to me that if you're gonna split the position in order, I mean, I think that the purpose of splitting the position to begin was, was that you had two people who were willing to go in there and do it, but neither one held all of the requirements to do the full job. I think my recommendation would be, here's your $24 an hour, and here's your entire line item, repost the job as the full position, and maybe break out, you know, five hours of it for administration, or none at all, and pay the person more, because that was the purpose, pay the person more, they will stay longer. That's what we heard from the very, from the very start. Pay them more, they'll stay longer. Well, now you have two people who hold the job, nobody wants to hurt anybody's feelings, and you can't figure out how to pay either one of them with the amount of money that you have. So my recommendation would be to rewrite the job description, post it as one position, and start over again. But that's only my suggestion.
Anybody have anything to add?
No.
Okay. Nope, we have a PRF for the Administrative Assistant to the Town Administrator. This position replaces Kevin Towel, who left in April. Heather has waited to post till after the fiscal year in order to save some money she's done without in her office. Well-
She's got all kinds of-
That's not what I meant. Mr. Lawrence.
Art, do you wanna do some more filing?
Not what I meant at all.
So unappreciated.
I'm sorry.
Let the court show who said that.
I'll be sure to miss it.
Art, do you wanna take the podium?
There's an, is there a motion to approve the PRF for the Administrative Assistant to the Town Administrator? There is a job description attached.
Will, will this preempt our volunteer, or, I don't wanna-
I, no, it doesn't, I, no.
It's out on the street.
Art will still be around, he'll just be doing IT stuff.
Thanks for saying.
But do note in the job description, it doesn't include the minutes, it's actually, I think, been working out really well to have Emily come and do the minutes at night, and actually, we've been solicited by many other towns who'd like to adopt the same situation, 'cause they find it's more helpful than having someone have to carry hours over into the evening to type the minutes. And Emily does a great job.
So does this pay rate include paying her? Are we gonna go over?
No, we already have a separate budget just to pay Emily, or whoever sits in Emily's seat, but we hope it's Emily.
I'll make the motion, we accept it.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll forth it.
Oh, it's not.
It's time to get up and work. Yeah, I know, I gotta go to North Adams tomorrow, which is in country.
Um, next, we have the Fiscal Year 15 Engagement Letter from Melanson &amp; Heath as the Town Auditors. This is our annual engagement letter with Melanson &amp; Heath, we just need a motion to sign, we do this every year.
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
That was good, I like that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a Title V Non-Discrimination Assurance, we need a signature from the Board of Selectmen that's required by the Department of Transportation. Is there a motion to sign?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I make the motion to start our meetings at 10:15 every night, 'cause they won't move much, just kidding. We need, we have a Conflict of Interest Disclosure for Randall Kemp. Randall submitted a Conflict of Interest Form for the Board of Selectmen to sign off on as the appointing authority. Do we have any comments or questions?
Same as last year?
Same as, he submits one every time there's a project.
Yeah.
Probably sign 10 or 12 of them a year. Is there a motion to sign?
So moved.
So what is the conflict of interest this way?
Probably, probably his-
So on Randall's one right here, Particular Matters, Highway Superintendent, my duties include signing the building permit application and issuance of permits, as well as making recommendations to town boards and committees and approval of changes to project design. As a conservation commissioner, my duties include issuance of permits that carry many of the same potential opportunities to encounter conflict of interest. My wife is an attorney who represents David Garska. Mr. Garska has purchased and is developing 182 Brickyard Road. Mr. Garska will need me, as a function of my position as highway super, to sign the building permit application, issue one or more of the following permits. And I may be required to make decisions or recommendations to town boards and committees and approval of changes to project design, and will have a conflict if and when Mr. Garska uses my wife to represent him in the sale of the Lauter House. I request that the-
Just tell her you've answered, she's answered your question if you're done listening.
I'll say.
Is there a motion to sign the disclosure from Randall? Is there a second?
Say again, sir.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If someone would like to read the payroll and bill warrants, I would accept those. Our next meeting is July 28th, which is the performance reviews of the town accountant and fire chief, also a public hearing on alcohol policies.
Which we moved to August 11.
Which we moved to August 11. You're right.
What was it? It's the reviews. We moved to August 11?
No, we moved the, we moved the alcohol policy to August 11.
Move the alcohol to August 11.
Yep.
Till later.
What time did we just say?
So if someone would like to read the warrants, I would accept those.
I move to approve the following warrants. W-16-2 in the amount of $894,699.33. W-15-54E in the amount of $280,943.77. P-15-55 in the amount of $19,005.63. P-16-03 in the amount of $176,527.30.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And she gets mad with us like we're kids.
Is that, there's more, right? The only, is this right here? Name, title, date?
Yes. The only thing we have left on here is if you wanna do the minutes, you can skip them to next time, but we have executive sessions.
So we're gonna skip the minutes? Has everyone read the minutes?
No, because I didn't send them out, so we can wait till next time, that's fine.
They changed?
There's only two in here, if you wanna look at them.
You didn't get the latest version. You know, I like five o'clock update.
Did you read those bill warrants yet, or just the payroll warrants?
All of them.
You did.
So at this moment, we're gonna move into executive session. We won't be returning to open session under Mass General law, Chapter 30A, Section Number 21. For number one, to discuss physical condition of an employee. For number four, to discuss strategy regarding security personnel. For number three, to discuss strategy with negotiation of litigation, and to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. For number two, to conduct collective bargaining with union and personnel. For number three, to discuss strategy with collective bargaining. By roll call, vote please.
Oh, I think you missed the very last one.
To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining.
No, it's on-
It's on the revised ones, J, to discuss strategy with negotiation of litigation for Hampshire County Retirement.
And that one, too. By roll call, vote.
Keneke, aye. Martin, aye.
Moulton, aye.
Suzie, aye.
Cutler, aye.